I will now call to order the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners Business Meeting on August 5, 2021. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes Chair Smith, first our staff support today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. Today we have four public hearings and we will take public comment for those items for each one. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close at five minutes past 10. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. Gary, what's up first?
Thank you Chair Smith. We'll begin with the public hearings. The first public hearing is approval of a board order for the annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One, CL 21-003. Ken Martin is the county's boundary consultant and he will present. Go ahead, please, Ken.
This is an annexation to the district. In the city of Happy Valley, it's a nine-acre piece. It's going to be developed eventually. Some additional development and the district has the services available since it's essentially the wholesale provider for that area. There is a sewer line adjacent to the property and we'd recommend approval.
There was a sewer line? I didn't hear the rest?
There is a sewer line adjacent to the property and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the presenter? I now will open a public hearing and ask if anyone wants to speak on this particular item. Christina, anybody online for that?
No Chair.
I will now close the public hearing and I will take... That is the end of my list. Sorry. I will now close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for the annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One, -CL 21-003.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved. We pass this annexation and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's up next?
Next public hearing, approval of a board order for the annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One, CL 21-004. Ken will also present.
This is also an annexation, a piece of property that's within the city of Happy Valley. In this case, it's been a failing septic tank. They have services available on the east edge of the property in 172nd and we'd recommend approval.
I will now open the public hearing and ask if anyone wants to testify on this item. I see no one in person. Christina, is there anybody online?
No Chair.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Christina, please call the poll.
Let's do a motion first.
Yeah, let's have a motion. Good idea.
I move we approve board order for annexation of the Clackamas County Service District Number One, -CL 21-004.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Any further discussion? Now we can call the poll, Christina. All righty. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Next public hearing, approval of a board order for the annexation to the Tri-City Service District, CL 21-002. Ken will present.
This is a piece of property within the city of Oregon City. It's just a one-acre piece. It has an existing home on the property. They desire sewer service and they need to annex to the district in order to get that service from the city. The city has a line available adjacent to the property and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing and ask if anyone wants to speak on this motion. I see no one in the audience. Christina, is there anyone online?
No Chair.
I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order for the annexation to Tri-City Service District, CL 21-002.
Second.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Scholl for this annexation and seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, would you please take the poll? Yes. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's up next?
Final public hearing is approval of a board order for the annexation to Tri-City Service District, CL 21-005. Ken, please go ahead.
This is a half-an-acre piece with a single-family dwelling. It's also in the city of Oregon City. Again, needs to annex into the district in order to acquire city services for sewer. There is a line adjacent to the property and we'd recommend approval.
I will now open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. I see no one in person. Christina, do we have anybody online?
No Chair.
Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on this item and ask for a motion. No. This is settled over for a third hearing?
No, that's incorrect Chair. You're correct.
That's what my script says.
I know, the script is incorrect.
Okay, so we can...
Apologies. Just call for the motion, please.
I will call for a motion.
I move we approve board order for the annexation of Tri-City Service District, CL 21-005.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savis has made the motion and Commissioner Scholl has seconded it. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Christina, please call the poll. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Very good Board. We went through those business items. Thank you Ken Martin for coming up. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the consent agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes. Starting with Health Housing and Human Services. Number one, approval of a consent to transfer assignment, assumption, and release agreement for 85 Cozy Acadia Gardens Home Loan. No financial impact to the existing home loan. No county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a consent to transfer assignment, assumption, and release agreement for Town Center Station. No financial impact to the existing home loan. No county general funds are involved. Number three, approval of a consent to transfer assignment, assumption, and release agreement for Mount Scott Terrace Apartments Home Loan. No financial impact to the existing home loan. No county general funds are involved. Number four, authorization to sign HUD grant award document for 2020-2021 Continuum of Care Program Funds. Total HUD grant is $1,276,308 with $74,587 budgeted as a match from county general funds. Number five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer county resources division funds. This is a revenue agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department not to exceed $31,747,027. No county general funds are involved. Number six, approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Maximum agreement is $424,192, funded through the Social Services, Oregon Housing and Community Resources, and various transportation agreement. No county general funds are involved. Under Finance, approval of a goods and services contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated for the Brooks Buildings BAS Systems Replacement Project. Total contract valued at $295,457, funded through county general funds. Under Elected Officials, approval of a previous business meeting minutes. Under County Counsel, approval of a quick claim deed for property to Lee and Christie Inglesby. There is not a financial impact. Number two, intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Fair Board for 2021 Clackamas County Fair. Under Technology Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Broadband Exchange and the City of Hillsborough. This is a reimbursement of $5,000 from the City of Hillsborough to CBX for staff expenses. No county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of Amendment Number Four between Clackamas County Broadband Exchange and the State of Oregon. Funding will be through CBX budget and later reimbursed by the State of Oregon. Monthly recurring cost through June 30, 2026 is $510 and non-recurring cost is $33,900. No general county funds are involved. And number three, approval of a contract between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Denver Gas and Electric MMR LLC. Monthly recurring cost is $1,192.50, funded through the CBX budget. No county general funds are involved. And that is your consent agenda.
Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Is there any further discussion? I do have a question. I was reading through the consent agenda and some of the items have asterisks next to them, but I don't see at the end what those asterisks refer to. Can somebody enlighten me?
I can. Those are items that were revised. This was a revised business meeting agenda that was originally published from this Tuesday when the board agreed to add items to this agenda. The asterisk just means it was an additional item added since the original agenda was posted.
Good. I learned something. Thank you very much. Okay. There's a motion on the table. Any further discussion? None. Christina, please call the poll. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Development Agency Board for the Consent Agenda.
Next is the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes. Number one is release of security deposit to Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative as required in the post-closing escrow and development agreement. $125,000 will be dispersed from the escrow account to OBRC. No fiscal impact. Number two, approval of the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas River Water and the Clackamas County Development Agency relating to the Clackamas Regional Center Mobility Improvement Project. No fiscal impact. Reimbursement agreement distributing $203,477.33 to the Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal Plan Area for work completed on behalf of the Water District. Number three, execution of a quick claim deed related to an owner participation development agreement between Constam Pacific Corp. and the Clackamas County Development Agency. No fiscal impact. Number four, execution of a bill of sale to the Government Camp Water Company for the new water line constructed in Government Camp. No fiscal impact. Number five, revocation of a special use permit from the United States Forest Service to Clackamas County to allow construction of a water line in Government Camp. No fiscal impact. Number six, approval of a special use permit from the United States Forest Service to Clackamas County for the maintenance of two community identification signs for Government Camp. There is no fiscal impact. And number seven, approval of a resolution approving a land division and conveyance of delegating authority to the Director of Department of Transportation and Development to execute the same. There is no fiscal impact. That's your consent agenda.
Does any commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, please call the poll.
Point of order Chair, I need a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Now we can call the poll. Thank you Christina for keeping me on track. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will adjourn as a Development Agency Board and convene as a Water Environment Service Board for the Consent Agenda. Gary?
Next is the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
There's only one item on this consent agenda. It's approval of amendment to the conservation easement, excuse me, granted to the Water Environment Services by Athie Creek Christian Fellowship for the Church's Accessible Parking Improvement Project. There is not a financial impact.
Does any commissioner wish to remove any item from this consent agenda? May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savis has moved and Commissioner Scholl has seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Christina, please call the poll. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will now adjourn as a Water Environment Service Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of the Board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading those due to meeting constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first and in our presence, we have the pleasure of having a public official. Would Mayor Mark Gamba please come forward? And our public officials, because they are such, get five minutes instead of the three minutes. Mayor Gamba, welcome.
Thank you very much Chair Smith. I wrote it for three, so hopefully I won't take up any more time.
Go ahead.
But there may be questions. Chair Smith, members of the North Clackamas Parks Board. The city of Milwaukee has been working hard to create a wonderful park on the river since before the Parks District was formed. To date, we've spent over $4.5 million consolidating the land and building out the first two phases. When the district came to Milwaukee to say that they wanted to redesign the park, they assured us that they would be able to build what they designed. So we went from a $3.5 million design to a $9.6 million design, which again, we were assured the district could build. Very recently, we were sent a construction IGA unlike any construction IGA I have ever seen. Much of it having nothing to do with the construction of the promised park. Yesterday, I sent you all the redlined version in an attempt to bring it back to something that more resembles a construction IGA that our two bodies have previously signed. If I were a suspicious man, I would think that the IGA we received and the vote against the next steps towards building the park a few weeks ago by this body were efforts towards forcing us out of the district. But since that makes no sense, I'm sure that's not what was meant. Why would a Parks District with the least funding of any Parks District of its size in the state want to chase away the one partner that has, over the years, consistently and for no cost to the district, spent its own money towards properties to build parks on? Parks, by the way, that people from all over the district enjoy and benefit from. Our last pre-COVID winter solstice event at Milwaukee Bay Park had over 6,000 people in attendance. So either more than a quarter of the residents of Milwaukee were in attendance, or more likely, people from all over the district came to enjoy it, again, at no cost to NCPRD. Our council is actively thinking about ways that we can help reduce your operating expenses, and they are doing that in good faith that we have a genuine partner that's interested in continuing to work with us. I'm sure you all know there is a window of opportunity to finish Milwaukee Bay Park, and delays in many required steps put this project at risk. It would be great if your Board treated us like the good and faithful partner we've always been and moved through these steps quickly so we don't miss our construction window. If you wish to dramatically change the dynamics of the relationship between Milwaukee and the CPRD, and you wish that to have a positive outcome, the more effective way might be to come to us directly and express your concerns and jointly work to address them, rather than hijacking a long-promised and ongoing project in order to force us to negotiate over something that has more to do with Happy Valley than it does with us. My ask is that you bring back the agenda item of a few weeks ago and you pass it and move the Milwaukee Bay Park project forward. I would also request that one of the commissioners who voted against it the first time join Commissioner Savis in the forthcoming negotiations to ensure that nothing is missed in the communications between the negotiating team and your commission. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you Mayor Gamba for bringing this very surprising accusations forward. I see no merit in what you've said today. In fact, you and I have had private conversations where I reiterated that we are very happy to have Milwaukee, the city of Milwaukee, as a partner in this. I find your comments disturbing and out of character on this. We view Milwaukee, and I certainly do, as I have told you privately, as a wonderful partner. I've said publicly how much I have personally enjoyed this park in its present condition. I think that construction IGA is important. I think what you might find is delaying this is, and maybe my commissioners can help me, because I have come into this in January not knowing all of everything going on. I can only operate from what I know at this point on January 4 going forward, and frankly, a lot of that past history, I believe, needs to be in the past. I believe today, we move forward with our projects and get them to completion, and that will require the city of Milwaukee, that will require the BCC, and that will require the NCPRD all to get along. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Hi Mayor Gamba, it's nice to see you today. And I was here when we built the ballpark with you guys, so I know that we do good work together. So I'm hoping that will continue. I don't, but I will tell you, I don't have a redlined copy in front of me. I have a copy that isn't redlined, so that isn't helping me very much. Could you please, what's the big holdup from your perspective? If you can help me understand, why are you saying this contract is different than other contracts we've had?
Well, if you...
Could you, like, just, like, just...
Sure. There's so much, it would take probably more than an hour to detail it, and I don't have it in front of me either.
Okay, okay.
But I can give you some examples. For starters, at the very last paragraph, there is a paragraph about these two public bodies keeping secret their agreements. And we found that disturbing. But before that, there are requirements in it that should we leave the district, no, not even if we leave the district, assuming we stay in the district, we are responsible for repairing and maintaining all the hardscape, all the concrete, any, so paths, whatever, fountains, whatever's built in the park that you can't literally pick up and walk away with, we're being required by this construction IGA to maintain that going forward, rather than our Parks District, which it's literally your job to maintain the park going forward. That's just one of many. And when you look at the last IGA that we all signed together, which would be the Wichita Park IGA from, what, two years ago, three years ago, it's exceedingly different, exceedingly different. Line by line, there are massive changes, and all of them have to do with Happy Valley and not to do with Milwaukee. So, as I said, I think we should do a construction IGA and keep the park moving forward, and that construction IGA should have nothing to do with Happy Valley. And if you guys have concerns after your experience with Happy Valley, I would request that you come to your partner that helped start this district in the first place, that has always been a very active part of this district, that has purchased and created parks within this district, often at our own expense or through grants that we received. Come to this partner and have a conversation about your concerns, and let's see if we can assuage any of them. But to include all of that baggage about Happy Valley in a construction IGA is both disingenuous and a little concerning for my council.
Well, I don't think we're trying to be disingenuous, so as much as, yes, Happy Valley experience was pretty awful. And I know the mayor's, well, the past mayor was a very good friend of mine, and we went round about it on numerous occasions. And it was a pretty difficult piece because what we had been doing, and this is the institutional memory I just want to talk about, what we had been doing under Dan Zinser is because Happy Valley was a high-growth area and we were able to get land, we were purchasing, I'm sorry, we were, land and developing as parks, as a good partnership. And it just became difficult. You know, we built a ball field there too, that is a ball field that is world-class, world-class ball field. But when Milwaukee left, excuse me, you're not going to leave, but when Happy Valley left, okay, it really, we really had to give up all those assets. So I think that part of this is that notion of trying to protect the folks who aren't within the city limits that also want to use these parks and not have us as a county use our assets, our district assets, only to have them suddenly. Now, when I'm hearing you say there's no comparison between the two, and that you believe in good faith that you folks will continue to stay in the district and be good partners.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's where I think the conversation has to go. And I know I have great faith, I've got to be very direct about this, because I, like all of my commissioners, I have great faith in Commissioner Savis. He's been our liaison, and I'm hoping that we can get together and work this out for the good of our constituents, whether they be in a city or in the unincorporated areas. But as I said, I'd like to see the red line and... But as I said, I'd like to see the redline, and there has to be clarity about why, Gary, why it's a different, why it is fundamentally different. I will say that under Dan Zinser, who is infamous, things were somewhat loosey-goosey, might I say, and maybe what's been happening is that we're just trying to solidify and be more professional as we work forward with these agreements. I would look at it more from that perspective than somehow we're trying to not be good partners with you.
But why would you include those things in a construction IGA?
I don't know, and that's what I'm going to ask, and let's find out why, okay? Because you know, we've worked with you for many years, and it would be a shame if projects in that area will falter because of this. I would not like to see that happen, so.
Yeah, well, we have a window of opportunity with our Corps of Engineers permit, right? There's, it only lasts so long, and if construction is not completed by a certain date, then we have a whole new fish to fry.
What is the date on that, Mayor Gamba? Do you know?
And off the top of my head, I can't quote it, but it's...
I am very sensitive of that.
It's tight.
I do understand that.
It's tight. We knew that if we didn't start construction, well, we were hoping construction would start this year, and we're pretty certain if we don't start construction next summer, next spring, whenever it can be started, we won't make the deadlines.
Well, now...
And there's a piece that I'd like to address in that concern. I understand when you're talking about ballparks that were built, that you purchased the land in the first place and then built the ballparks, and now you can't schedule folks from North Clackamas Parks District into that ballpark. Milwaukee Bay Park is a significantly different park. Short of Milwaukee, if, in this version of reality where we leave the district, short of us putting up a fence around Milwaukee Bay Park and checking IDs at the door before you come in to launch your vote, or technic, or something like that, I'm not entirely sure how the folks that aren't in Milwaukee would be denied use of that park.
Nor should they, in my opinion.
Nor should they. All of our parks, all of our neighborhood parks that we built before the district, all of the parks that we have built since the district but with our own money, all of those parks are used by people from all over, and they will continue to be used by people from all over, no matter what. That's why it was really concerning to my council to see that contract.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gamba, for being here today. I do want to just, I guess, so to speak, explain that the Board of County Commissioners never saw the contract, were not part of drafting the contract. That was a staff level, just like all the previous agreements for Milwaukee Bay Park. They've all been done at the staff level. You saw the agreement, actually before I did, because you responded to it before I even saw it. It was in my inbox the same time you got it, so this board took no part in crafting that draft, that draft contract.
Well, then, as a leader of my city, I would be very concerned if my staff drafted a contract with a partner that dramatically and politically changed the essence of that relationship, when it was completely outside of the scope of what that contract was meant to do. I'd be very concerned.
Okay, well, if I'm not going to be allowed to finish my comments, then I guess I'll just, Gary, could you just confirm, in the meeting when we had Mr. Gamba and the city manager and the legal counsel from Milwaukee, you insisted at that time, at that meeting, that the contract be distributed to everyone, even though the Board of County Commissioners never saw it, or the Board of NCPRD never saw it? Is that correct, Gary?
That is correct. The Board of Commissioners or the Parks District Board did not see that document. It was a staff first draft, redline, and because of the urgency of the meeting we had with the Milwaukee folks is to get a draft out ASAP. That was not a final approved copy of any means, it was just a first draft of a redline document. So I take responsibility, because it was not on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners and the District Parks Board. I thought I was pretty clear about that, but I apologize, Mayor, if that was the assumption that that was a document already vetted by the board. It was not. It was a first draft of a redline document.
Yeah, and I will just say, just to build on that, is that I think the reason that Mr. Schmidt, our district administrator and county administrator, did that was to help expedite the agreement, which I believe still today is a staff-level agreement. The county and the city, the district and the city, have several agreements that have come along for this particular phase of the Milwaukee Bay project. This is the only one that's been slowed down, and I don't know why.
Because you guys took a vote to not continue with the next step.
Mayor, I'm talking about prior to that. Two months prior to that, three months prior to that, the city staff have been aware that, and you told me on...
Now, this document, that document that we just got was the first time that anybody on my staff has ever seen that document.
Chair, I'm not going to be interrupted any longer. I've completed my comments.
Yeah, Mayor Gamba, I appreciate your frustration coming forward. This is not a debate, this is not a fight that we're going to have here at the dais. Commissioner Schrader, do you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, I think that we just need to, I would agree, let's take it to a more appropriate venue, so we can understand where the, because pointing fingers at this, I mean, which is kind of, I think, where we're going, which isn't going to be helpful. So why don't we work with our administrator and with our staff, and you too, as well, Mayor Gamba, we find out where this sense of miscommunication has come in? I think that would be the better way to go. I will say that I do have a tremendous amount of trust in Commissioner Savis, okay? I think that he's worked very hard, and I think that he has truly the, you know, the love of this district as part of what he wants to see happen. So let's assume the best of one another, and let's just have a broader conversation in a different venue.
Gary, I think the entire board has trust in Commissioner Savis. That's not an issue with me personally here. Gary, do you have any recommendations?
There's already a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, August 12, with Mayor Gamba and his staff, and Commissioner Savis and our staff, to talk about the redline draft and to hopefully come to a conclusion, if not that meeting soon after. So that's already on the books.
And I'm going to set an intention right here about that meeting next week, in that we are not accusatory, that everybody gets to vet and say what they want without interruption and going forward, because if we continue to accuse and interrupt people in mid-sentence, we're not going to get anywhere, and I'm talking both sides for that. Thank you, Mayor Gamba, for coming forward today. Next, our public communication, Les Poole, please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I lived in Oak Grove for 20 years, and I've been in Gladstone for a while. Interesting hearing about the parks saga, and unlike Chair Smith, I've been here through all of it. And in 1992, I want to correct something for the record, in 1992, the Parks District was formed, and about $700,000 was included in the formation of the district for purchasing parkland. So the city of Milwaukee was fortunate in getting its share, which went towards purchasing the riverfront, which is the topic of discussion, the Kronberg Park property, which was a disaster, terribly handled in the light rail fiasco, and a small piece of property from my parents who donated half of the value of our property to the Parks District. The new walking bridge that connects 90-90 with the bridge over Kellogg there is on our former property. The only question I have is, and I would say, as someone who's just sitting here, I didn't hear any explanation for how a 3.5 million dollar project became 9 million, and why last January, with everything going on, last December at the end of the year, I'm all for parks, don't get me wrong, but I'd like to know how this is the biggest priority that brings elected officials here. I'd like some of the elected officials to show up on some of the other issues, specifically transportation, specifically land use planning, and I would extend, and long before today, I was going to extend a invitation to Metro President Lynn Peterson to come down here and start communicating with us rather than taking cheap political shots. You know, in 2020, there was a tremendous message in all that went on with Metro. We had COVID. Wouldn't Metro's boundary have been the appropriate place when they were talking about creating areas where we were going to have different communities together to fight the pandemic? But instead, we ended up married up with five counties, and then we ended up, you know, back and forth. My point is, Metro's trying to be all things to all people. Metro failed miserably at the ballot box last year, miserably, and unfortunately, we're paying a tremendous price for Metro's failings. Unlike Mayor Gamba, I understand I don't have five minutes or 10 minutes here. If I did, I would talk a little further about Metro. I will certainly be sending testimony and things to the commission about this so that we can move forward on things other than just our parks.
Thank you, Les, I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Gary, there are two numbers have been presented and then repeated as fact today, and frankly, I don't know whether it's true or not. And the question was, how did a 3.5 million park suddenly escalate to 9 million? I don't know that's true. I was not here when these agreements were made. I think that bears further introspection. Is there anybody in the room or staff that can answer that question for me? I would appreciate it, or any commissioner. I see none, so we will bring back that answer at next week's business meeting. Thank you very much. Up next on public comment is Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning to all of you. Well, this kind of threw a call by showing what I was going to say...
Indicate yourself, please, madam.
Pardon?
Okay, go ahead.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This kind of threw a call by showing what I was going to say to...
Just continue with what you're going to say, that's okay.
You know, in a way, it didn't. In a way, it didn't. This has really kind of thrown me off. Tudy said something today that is very true for her and Mark. I mean, it isn't that they aren't knowledgeable, but they walked in to somebody else's mess. It isn't any secret that Jim Bernard was not someone I had a lot of respect for. I don't believe he did good things for Milwaukee. I don't believe he did good things for this county, and I think a lot of mess we have comes from him. Okay, I'll close my mouth on that. There are two lists that I want to talk about. There is a list that the commissioners got on January 13th that was calling for Mark to step down. Then there is this list that Chris put on her website, and I'm talking about Chris Weller. I have talked to two people on this list. They did not know they were on Chris's list. I find that to be disturbing, because that could mean that she is using their hard work, their reputation, to cause a lot of the disturbance that has been caused. I talked to Martina, and I talked to Sherri Hall. I am going to go see Sherri when I leave here, because I'm taking her this list. She said, I shouldn't be on there. I said, okay, you know, I'll bring you a list, because I don't have anything to hide. Mark is just a guy, just like the rest of you who are women, and you're trying to do what you think is correct. The garbage that I believe...
Thank you, Yvonne.
Please give me just a minute.
Yvonne, I appreciate the difficulty in coming before and speaking, but I must maintain consistency.
All right, all right, I'll come next week.
Thank you, and maybe you can pick up next week where you are today and not be distracted by other noise in the room.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much. Up next, Grover Barnfeld, please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes. Yeah, you know, I wear hearing aids awful, and I tell you, between hearing aids, glasses, and a little strap behind, you know, I lost a hearing aid because of the mask. That was $2,000, like that.
Same thing.
So guess what? I quit wearing hearing aids.
What?
So I had to make a choice. I quit. I had to make a choice. Do I want to see? Do I want to be not arrested for not wearing a mask, or do I want to hear? So I understand perfectly what you mean by that.
Well, thank you for your appreciation of the life challenges we all live with.
We do. Well, Grover, go ahead.
Okay, so...
Say your name, please.
Thank you, I will. My name is Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld. I'm a 31-year resident of Jennings Lodge, and I'm currently serving on the Oak Lodge Library Advisory Board, we changed our name, and I'm also serving on the Concord and Library Planning Task Force, and have been on that since its inception, and I'm also serving on now the new, soon-to-be in session District Advisory Committee. We'll have our first real working meeting coming up.
Well, you're a busy man, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm also a veteran, yes.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just really want to thank you for coming on that Parks tour. It was nice to spend some time with you. I never had a chance at that before. It's always good to see you, Martha.
Thank you.
Sonia, Mr. Savis. So anyway, I want to talk about, first of all, thanking you all for where we've gotten with the Parks world, because four years ago, the District Advisory Board was in hiatus, suspension, whatever it was, while the Happy Valley saga was working out, and so there was nothing, no citizen involvement was directly addressing what was going on in NCPRD. So that happened for almost two full years, and then we came to you, and you specifically, not all the same faces, but you specifically agreed to readjust it to be proportional. Under the current configuration of our Parks District, 80% live in unincorporated, and there has been concerns over the last year, 30 years, whether or not there is a proportional representation. So one of my first requests of the District Advisory Committee is that we actually attribute the assets that are currently in NCPRD to the five subareas, each having comparable populations, so we can actually see how close to equitable we are. So thank you for giving us that opportunity. I'm really looking forward to getting into that. I'm also very much looking forward to meeting the new director and getting started with that as well. So that's my thank you. What brought me today, more than anything else, was this front page, which was, it's the same front page that Mayor Gamba was speaking about and is quoted in extensively. It's on the front page of the current Clackamas Review, and my big concern is the misrepresentation that is in there based on my understanding of all these years of working with the Parks District and the research that we did to actually reform the new format. We went back and read IGAs from the inception through the first IGA in 1992 with the Regional Park Board, as well as Neighborhood Parks Board, et cetera, and I'm very excited about pursuing that. But this makes, you cannot just forget Happy Valley happened, and I don't want to confuse Happy Valley, Milwaukee, they're not the same. However, if we're putting...
I'm going to allow you to continue because you have, I believe you have status with all of your positions that you hold.
Well, thank you very much for that.
So try to be brief when you continue.
I'm almost done.
That's all right.
So the reality is, I forgot where I was. That's another age thing.
Putting money in another jurisdiction.
Putting money, yeah.
Putting money...
Oh, yes, where that money is going, yes. So is that money that is coming from the 105,000 residents of NCPRD that is going into a piece of property owned by another entity that has every right, I don't want them to leave, but has every right to leave at any time with no, we need a prenup here. We need something. We learned from Happy Valley. We lost heavily in that process. I testified at the state legislature to try to save that model and so on and so forth, but we do not need to just blindly go... Now, whether what was written and how it was presented, I don't know, but I know that for months, that process and that concern has been in the works. So I'm, how do we, how do I get to see what is? Is that a secret document?
No, it's not. It's not a secret.
Okay, so may I get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'd love to read it and be a part of that. So that's really all I wanted to say. I just want to, again, thank you all. I'm looking forward to, I'd like to say, the next 30 years of doing all this and moving forward because we have a huge opportunity, and if we don't work together, it's only going to get uglier and uglier and uglier. And that's why I live here. I used to work, do all kinds of stuff nationally. All my focus is in Clackamas County.
Well, Grover, I want to thank you for your service, and you bring forward some very important points. Yes, we do need to work together, and I tried to state that today. And come forth making accusations about this or that are not going to get us anywhere. As a matter of fact, for the record, I will state, I had heard that it came from a Milwaukee city councilor who threatened if they didn't get their way, they would pull out of the Parks Districts. That, where this is started. And for anybody to put that on this VC's shoulders, I think is wholly inappropriate. So going forward, we're still going to have to work with this. We'll work forward. I want to appreciate you coming forward on that. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I too want to thank Mr. Bornfeld for coming here today, and thank you for making the points that you did. For those who are probably not understanding this, and I think Mr. Bornfeld is trying to make that point, and I know that the board of NCPRD, as we sit at times, is trying to do what's in the best interest of the district and try to repair and mend a number, and fix a number of challenges or missteps or absence of agreements and so forth, and try to correct a lot of this. We're doing the best we can. And we will continue to work in good faith. We will continue to work in the best interest of the district. And the 105,000, that includes all the residents of Milwaukee, so they are an important part. And I think that's really what we're trying to do here. And I'm hoping that the public stays and keeps a sharp, focused eye on all this. I appreciate your involvement, and I hope that all of the, all of the groundswell of support to fix the district, to fix the District Advisory Committee. I want to thank Milwaukee for approving fixing, re, putting that proportional representation. They've helped us, so I want to acknowledge that. So it's important that we do what's in the best interest of the district, protect those assets, and as you said, you know, if we're going to put money in a piece of property that the district doesn't own, we just got to have a prenup or an agreement, and that's simply all this is. I expected this to be a staff-level agreement that would have gone through. The hang-up, I don't understand, but we'll get there. We'll get there. Thank you.
I did have one other fact that you pointed out that...
Yes.
So in this article, there makes comments about the three zones. And in early 2018, the City of Milwaukee City Council approved eliminating the three zones and brought that to the, it was the SDC Steering Committee, which was all in essence the District Advisory Board without the Happy Valley people so they could look ahead. They brought that letter and handed it in, and that body voted to also eliminate the zone. So I'm quite shocked that we haven't eliminated them, and I don't know if we're acting like it's already happened, but in truth, it has been approved by every body except the folks sitting up there, and I look forward to that being sooner than later. Just thank you very much.
Thank you, Grover. Appreciate your testimony. Now, I do not see any more people in person to testify. We will turn to our Zoom. Christina, who's up first?
Up first is Connie Lee. Connie, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Connie Lee. I live in Lake Oswego. I'm so glad that the commissioners are concerned about the third wave of COVID that we are seeing now in Clackamas County. Experts are telling us that the Delta virus is more dangerous and affects more people than earlier versions of COVID. The statistics I have read say that vaccinated people can be asymptomatic or have milder cases, but they can still pass the virus along to others. The statistics also tell us that Delta virus is killing unvaccinated people at a very high rate, and the Delta virus is affecting children, something we didn't see with previous versions. This information must be very unnerving for our elected officials, especially when they have had many insistent people telling them at these meetings that COVID is a hoax. It must worry you to know that these people may be admitted to local ICUs in the near future, and that the staffs at our hospitals are already exhausted from previous waves of patients with COVID. It looks like many Clackamas residents may die in coming weeks. But I know you all care about this and will do everything you can to mitigate the harm done. This includes, number one, encouraging masks, even for the vaccinated, as they can pass the virus on to the unvaccinated. And two, encouraging the unvaccinated to reconsider that choice. I'm for freedom of choice, but this virus kills our loved ones who have chosen not to be vaccinated. And finally, three, supporting our beleaguered hospitals in continuing to care for the next wave of COVID patients, as the doctors and nurses have been through hell and back with this pandemic already. I know you, as commissioners, have managed many disasters in the last year, in the last year and a half, and you will find a calm and thoughtful way to confront this disaster. So thank you for standing up for all of us, not just your political supporters. Thank you again.
Thank you. Up next, Christina?
Up next is Christine Kennedy. Christine, if you can go ahead and unmute yourselves, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes. Oh, yep, we can hear you now.
Okay. Administrator Schmidt, Chair Smith, commissioners, my name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego, Clackamas County. I've been here for seven years. I am a retired nurse, worked for 45 years in all kinds of different hospitals. The most recent hospital was a large university medical center in Nashville, and I actually was in charge of the medical ICU there. So very sensitive to these issues around COVID. Last week, I testified, and I asked a question about testifying, and I mistakenly left out my real question was, what is the expectation for people who are testifying in public in terms of masking? I had written this on 7/15, asking the same question, and this is what I received this week. It is the county's guidance that masks are no longer required in Clackamas County buildings, either by staff or visitors. If community members do not feel safe testifying in person, the public is still welcomed and invited to participate digitally using phone or video conferencing technology. In an effort to be inclusive of everyone wanting to participate regardless of vaccination status and maintaining consistency guidance in the governor's office, governor's order, masks are not being required in hearings and other public meetings. So it was important for me to get that information in terms of making a decision about testifying in person, because last week Chair Smith made a special invitation for me, and that's why I'm not testifying in person. I'm very careful about what's happening. My choice now is to continue to testify by Zoom, really just because of the overall situation. Last week, TUDi asked two questions. One was to me after I had already been cut off. Her question was, does the vaccine work? And if so, why are there these breakthrough cases? Here's my understanding. This is a vaccine that's been proven safe and effective. Issues with the variants have been discussed for months. The Delta variant is now here. Over 90% of the cases in Oregon are Delta. Has higher viral loads. When you have the Delta virus, there are higher viral loads in the body. Vaccine works. It is protective, like good body armor. I don't really understand a lot about body armor, other than the fact that from a medical perspective, body armor is considered protective, and it'll save your life many times, but injury can still occur. And that's kind of what's happening with this Delta virus. The viral load is so high. Ms. Smith, do you have a question or something I can help you with? I see you're reading.
Thank you very much for testifying. Up next, Christina?
Next up is Tim Smith. Let me grab him. Looks like he is no longer online. So we'll move on to the next. It's Tanya Strifel. Tanya, if you can, shoot, Tanya, your system is outdated, so I'm unable to let you speak. If you can maybe log off and update really quick, and we can come back to you.
I'm going to interject something. I was reading the new information put out by our public health officer on 18 different data points that requested new information on, and what I was preparing to answer to the last caller who ended her phone call in an insult, had she stuck around, I would have been able to tell her exactly how many new cases of the Delta variant there are. I will continue to read that to get that information. This is brand-new in our inboxes, so commissioners, because of our prior duties this morning, have not had time probably to read everything on that. So I, along with the rest of the people, do not like being accused of something that I'm not doing. Who's up next? Is that it?
We have one last speaker. It's going to be Chris Waller. Chris, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Chair Smith, last week, you asked a question. You wanted to know if it was possible for the COVID-19 vaccine to cause COVID. You said you had a childhood friend who you thought contracted polio from the polio vaccine, and it seemed you feared that the COVID vaccine could be causing the rise in cases. As a former science teacher, I think that I can explain the answer in simple terms, and the answer is no. There's absolutely no chance of the vaccine causing COVID. Now, let's talk about why and why the polio vaccine was different. Vaccines work by training your immune system to recognize a specific invader. When you get a vaccine, your immune system responds to the vaccine the same as it would to the real germ. Unlike immunity that is acquired by getting infected with a virus, vaccine-induced immunity is a standardized dose that leads to a predictable, consistent immune response. In contrast, studies so far show that people who are infected with COVID have widely varying immunity, with people who did not become very ill often developing little immunity. Vaccine immunity is also much safer than natural immunity. The risk of developing a serious vaccine-related side effect is much smaller than the risk of serious complications or long-term side effects of infected with COVID. Oral polio vaccine uses a live but weakened virus. In very rare circumstances, this live virus can mutate into an infectious form. For this reason, oral polio vaccine is no longer used in the U.S. COVID vaccines do not use a live COVID virus. They do not even use a whole dead virus. The Moderna and Pfizer vaccines are mRNA vaccines. They use messenger RNA, or mRNA, which is a blueprint that cells use to make protein to teach our cells to make a protein that is found on the surface of the COVID virus. The immune system then recognizes that the viral protein is foreign and makes antibodies against it. The cell breaks down and gets rid of the mRNA soon after it's finished using the instructions. Johnson &amp; Johnson's vaccine uses a live virus of a completely different species that is harmless to humans. The virus is modified so that it can make the same protein that is found on the surface of the COVID virus. Just like the mRNA vaccine, the immune system then recognizes that the viral protein is foreign and makes antibodies against it. So since vaccines do not contain any cold, live COVID virus, they cannot possibly cause COVID. The rise in cases in Oregon is due to the Delta variant, not to COVID vaccines. I hope that your original question was genuine and that you've now learned something you didn't know before. I would suggest that when you have questions, you consult the excellent experts at your disposal and get factual answers, and I would suggest that you start checking your facts before you raise doubts that may discourage people from getting vaccinated. Thank you.
I'm just going to caution to any of the listeners that disclaimer needs to be made by the testimony submitted today, that none of the callers who called in are experts. They are political, stating an opinion. Thank you very much. Christina, anybody else up?
That's it, Chair.
Okay. All right. Gary, what's up next?
Next is County Administrator Update. I would share some good news, things happening in Clackamas County. First, we received a nice note from Judy in Lake Oswego expressing gratitude for our Transportation and Development staff and their transportation maintenance team. Judy wrote, "Sending gratitude and thankfulness for your team, especially Mike Schaefer and Greg Davis, who came to remove a dead fawn from the road. Your department has been so responsive over the 20 years we have lived here, and your staff always responds with kindness and compassion." So thank you, Judy, for that note, and thank you, Mike and Greg, for your outstanding service. Next, our staff in Children, Family and Community Connections, a division of Health, Housing and Human Services, has updated numbers on their workforce program support. This is a program that helps people who are struggling to find living wage jobs. During the pandemic, our staff switched to virtual help and then set up in-person trainings with using COVID safety protocols on-site. Our Employment Training Center allows staff to support job seekers who have limited technological skills or no access to computers. The center also has a dedicated Zoom station for members of the public to conduct virtual interviews with job employers, with employers. From July 2020 through June 2021, our Employment Training Center had 455 in-person client visits by appointment, and while other local employment programs significantly limited in-person services, our staff did not, and we were allowed to help serve these over 450 people, help find jobs here within Clackamas County. So thank you to our outstanding staff. Finally, commissioners, the Development Services Building here on the Red Soils campus is open to the public starting tomorrow, August 6. We closed to the public on Fridays when the pandemic began, so now we are finally opening back to the public on Friday to provide Friday services in addition to the Monday through Thursday hours we're already open. So the building will be open 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Fridays, so which means our lobby staff on, for Transportation and Development, will also be open around 8:00 to 3:00 that same day. So this is all online, and we've done social media, but just wanted to announce we're finally back open on Fridays to the public to provide services. That is my update. Thank you.
Excellent. Quite excellent. Thank you, Gary, for that. Now, we move on to Commissioner Communication, and the order is this. Commissioners, I'm going to read it just to give you heads up. First, Commissioner Shaw, then Fisher, Schrader, Savas, and then myself. That is the order today. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith, and good morning, Clackamas County. On first responders, I'd like to share an experience I had on Tuesday night in Happy Valley that was a joyful experience. Happy Valley put on a tribute to its first responders, and I got to tell you, that city is truly well-named. It's a happy valley. People were there, having a great time. I haven't seen so many little happy kids and happy little puppy dogs for a long time. And also, I'd like to make sure that those first responders out there know how important their job is, and when we have... And when we have a city and a county that's got law and order 24/7, 365, it shows. And also, I want to thank Terry Emmert from Emmert International for sponsoring the evening with great entertainment and actually a really impressive fireworks show with no fires, by the way. So thank you, Happy Valley. On fire safety, last night, the Board of Commissioners had a town hall on wildfire update. Be prepared. If you're not sure how communication works, if you don't know what your evacuation routes will be in case of a fire, and if you're not familiar with how to increase your readiness for fires, you need to take action today. Check with your CPO in unincorporated areas with your city disaster management if you're in the city. And then everybody needs to get on the Clackamas County Disaster Management website to get A to Z on what you can do to prepare and be safe. On Boring and Dull Days, next Monday, August 9th, at the Park in Boring at 4:45, is going to be a parade, 6 o'clock, opening ceremonies, at 7 o'clock, a drawing. I was there last year and despite the name, Boring and Dull Days, it was a good time and I encourage everybody to be there to support our fine city of Boring this Monday evening. On K through 12 school, I'm getting a lot of calls from parents who are worried about mandates come September when school opens. This is a very hard issue. We do have the COVID thing to be concerned about. Salem is looking at new mandates that will govern how our K through 12 schools are operated this year. But I encourage parents to speak up. Whether or not you agree with masks or not, make your voice heard. You parents out there, those are your kids, that's your school, and your voice in Salem is very critical. Again, we don't make decisions here in the county on K through 12 schools, but we have opinions and will support your right to make your voice heard. And finally, on the Portland Water Bureau filtration plan, tonight, I'll be at the Pleasant Home Church for a meeting with the Catrelle, Bull Run, and Boring CPOs to discuss this project. I'll be talking to them about some of the concerns of people from Clackamas County, even though the project is right across the line in Multnomah County. But if I have not talked to you or if you have a concern about this meeting tonight, call me this afternoon and I'll make sure your concerns are passed on. And Chair Smith, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Up next, Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I just wanted to share a few of the key points from the report that Chair Smith identified earlier. We received this report last evening and in the midst of our wildfire town hall, I was not able to multitask because I was too engaged listening
Absolutely.
to all of our residents that really shared the firsthand experiences of what that experience was like. I think some of the, and I know I've heard it a little bit, but sometimes when you hear it again, it's like, oh my gosh. The one caller that said, it took me five hours to drive what normally takes me 12 minutes. And the fear of when you leave your house and not being able to see where the fire is because the smoke is so great and trying to arrange for evacuations, just really hit home how critical our community support and our communications and how incredibly important the work is that we're doing now in our after-action, our post, they call it post-mortem? That was what it was referred to last night, to really plan ahead. And that, I think, is an incredible job won for this commission. And so after that, and then had dinner, I sat down and I read our report. And I'm not going to belabor everything in it. I do believe that this is a public document. And Gary, I want to know if anybody wants the full report? Are we at liberty to share that or are we going to attach it to our website or how does that work?
Yes, everything we do is public record, of course, but this was written for you, commissioners, not for public consumption. So if it was, I think our staff would frame it and write it differently.
Okay.
So if that's the intent, I want to fix that.
Because it's quite long, is, I think. It's very long and
It's 20 pages long.
And you can talk about whatever data point you wish to, Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. So in summary, last week, there were 468 new cases. And with that, I'm going to ask Christina to put up a slide that talks about
I don't think we're going to be doing a slideshow on that particular board.
No, it's pretty, it's pretty quick.
Just let one slide.
Yeah.
One slide?
Well, it's just a few. But Christina, could you please?
Okay. Oh, look. Okay, I'm trying to be extremely accommodating, but I think that we need notice of the board before we're going to present information that has not been intended for the public. I think if you want information that is not intended for the public to be made public, we need a little bit of notice in order to do that. I don't know. Gary?
So these are slides that Philip emailed to the board last night?
Yeah, there's just four slides that just demonstrate what I wanted to say. It's pretty, they're pretty brief and pretty to the point.
Okay.
And then Christina has them prepared.
Go ahead, Christina. Next time, though, Commissioner, I'd like to, if we could work in advance so we can prepare and staff can prepare documents that are for public
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, okay. I think we should just let people know ahead of time, but I think for now, let's just, Chair, thank you for being so flexible, okay, with this. But I do think if we do have this, we should let folks know ahead of time next go around.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Christina.
Christina, so the first slide shows, are you able to pull it up?
Yeah.
The, last week, we were at substantial transmission based on our cases per 100,000. This week, we have, the cases have increased, as you've seen, and so we are now at high transmission per the CDC Centers for Disease Control categories. The next slide shows the increase of what that looks like and you can look back through the time and see how we are inching upward with the spread of the Delta variant. Next slide. And this is statewide data for hospitalizations. Next slide. This is good to know as far as when we were talking about the Delta variant, it's as contagious as chickenpox. The vaccines are still preventive of severe disease, but there is more potential community spread despite vaccination. And is there another slide or is that it? Oh, just letting folks know, we are still vaccinating. These are the events. You can get your vaccine and if there's a barrier to vaccines, we do have mobile vaccines and the ability to get home vaccines for people that are homebound. So I think that's it. Is that right? Thank you, Christina. Those were some of the key takeaways I had from the report. I really appreciate our staff and the incredibly diligent work that they're doing. Our public health response still continues. Our contact tracing and dealing with outbreaks, our staff is working very hard to do the best they can to limit transmission of the virus. The, I checked with Philip Mason-Dwener. He does let each, the whole board know through these reports that the recommendations at this point continue to be masking when in public places, public indoor spaces, and vaccination as the best defense against transmission of the virus. So some, just some anecdotal things. I've posted a couple times, I'm asking the public to just weigh in. I have just questions I've put out there and gotten some interesting response. Some things that I'm really interested in knowing, and I know that Commissioner Shaw mentioned that he's been receiving questions from parents and school and requirements and mask wearing and all of that. I really want to know and I'm hoping we can glean data as we move forward as to what, how is this virus affecting children? We can watch national news and we can learn what's happening in other communities. I quite frankly, don't know specifically what's happening in our community and it's going to be really important. I know that our public health director is engaged with our superintendents and providing that support. So just having us linked on that in a discussion, I think, is so important because truly, our children are our most precious asset and we have to balance all of the competing needs. And quite frankly, our kids need to go to school, they need to be with other kids, they need to socialize and, in my opinion, most, most, majority needs to learn in a classroom. So I'm hoping that we can, we can get there safely. And with that, I want to thank my chair for the liberty for allowing me to have my commissioner communication. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I've had a busy week, basically talking to some of our mayors. I had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Joe Buck. I met with Mayor Walters yesterday from West Lynn. Joe is from Lake Oswego and Mayor Walters is from, as I just said, West Lynn. And it's just finally because now that I feel a little more comfortable after getting, you know, vaccinated, that now we're starting to at least do some one-on-one conversations. And tomorrow, I will be meeting with Mayor Fitzgerald from Wilsonville. And a lot of the discussion has been revolving around housing. And what I'm finding out is that our city leaders are very interested in potentially working with our housing authority and those folks to get like a Housing 101 because usually that function of capacity falls to us with the housing authority and then the wraparound services piece. And they would like to really get a fuller understanding of what that system is for getting HUD dollars, how we have to cobble together funding in order to build capacity for housing. They want to get an idea of what we mean when we're talking about average, medium income from, you know, lower income to medium income to workforce housing, so on and so forth. So I've talked with Commissioner Savas and going to suggest that maybe we do this as a C4 piece. So, because our cities are interested, Lake Oswego's looking at doing an affordable housing with the help of the county unit in Lake Oswego. I know that Mayor Walters is interested in that. So it seems as if, at this point, the timing's right to really do some good work with our community and our leaders throughout the 16 cities of this county. I know we've also talked to Estacada, Sean Drink Ryan, I think you were there, Commissioner Shaw. We did it there, interested. So we're having a lot of opportunity here to, I think, work. It sounds as if I should be talking to Mayor Gamba, Commissioner Savas. And anything I can do to help, I will be there for you. One other announcement I'd like to make is the Street of Dreams is on, you know, and I hear that they not only have beautiful houses, they also have actually tiny homes, you know, that are kind of on display as well. So that is in Happy Valley this year. And so if you get a chance to get some tickets and go, I think it'll be very entertaining. I'm going to be joining my friends on Friday night to do that. And finally, I want to give a shout out to David Bugney because the Board of Directors of the Clackamas County Farm Forestry Association basically has awarded him the Clackamas County Woodland Farmer of the Year. And I'm going to be there Saturday getting a tour of the, of his property.
Great.
And I'm really looking forward to that. He's a good guy. He is the one largely responsible for really pulling together Journey Down the Clackamas, which is still going on as a virtual meeting once a month, dealing with everything Clackamas River related. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Your comments about the housing education is quite timely. We discussed that, Commissioner Schrader, at our agenda study meeting today and are figuring out what the corrective venue for that is. Gary, would you like to comment?
Yes, Chair Smith. So multiple mayors are asking for this information, as you know, commissioners. Our housing authority staff did do presentations with every city last year as we were preparing our local implementation plan for the Supportive Housing Services Program on Housing Authority 101. So that has already happened. I understand there are new elected officials since January who had not heard that yet. So I do suggest that the C4, Clackamas County Coordinate Committee, really would be the best venue to do that because that is a existing gathering of all cities already. And I know Commissioner Savas is the chair of C4 and that he'll be talking about that with the Executive Committee of C4. So I propose that would be the venue instead of you going to every single city, commissioners, which would be a lot.
That's not doable for us to go to every single city. But I appreciate their interest in that, learning what, you know, who's on first and this housing situation is just very complicated all of a sudden. Thank you very much for that, Gary. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, just to build on the conversation, C4 is tonight. We meet the first Thursday of every month, so we'll try to raise that as an issue and an opportunity to educate everyone. I just want to, you know, just add on that the role of the HACC, our Housing Authority, has changed with the Supportive Housing Services function being added. So there's probably a lot to update. But we probably will have, you know, a fuller, more complete report when we have a complete work plan in place and a signed IGA with Metro and the counties for the rollout of those services. So Commissioner Schrader and I are actually meeting this afternoon to work on that again since we keep that moving. It's a big, high priority for us all. What I wanted to speak about a little bit was really about some of our principles. You know, I know we have this Clackamas County Board of Commissioners working agreements that we've, you know, that's evolved from one commission to another commission and recently in our last retreat, we added some and I appreciate having these at hand. I think number three, which reads, be honest, respectful, and fair to each other, is an important one. And number 12, praise in public and critique in private, both to staff and to each other and really each other is really amongst us all. And I think that's incredibly important. And it's also really actually important to do that with other people in our community, elected officials and so on. It's, I was, you know, there was, the one-to-one principle that I always, I'm reminded of is do not bear false witness against thy neighbor. It's a pretty, pretty basic precept is one of, you know, one of the things I was raised on. And, you know, I think it sometimes without that, it is hard to work in good faith. And recent article made some unfounded, untrue, baseless, and frankly unfortunate comments. And, you know, those things happen, but we need to rise above that and hopefully get to a better place. But I think really as far as doing what's in the best interest in whatever hats we're wearing, whether it's the Board of County Commissioners, the Housing Authority, the NCPRD District, so forth, I've certainly learned in the last 20 years of elected service that, excuse me, that sometimes some folks don't want to follow those precepts or those guidelines. I think it's important to maintain our professional behavior with each other and with others in our community and especially elected officials. I think we have to rise to a higher standard and I will always try to do that. I did want to speak briefly about a concern that I've been hearing, actually been hearing for five years now, and that is, excuse me. I got it. And that is the increase in crime that is happening on some of our corridors. Recently, some business owners on 82nd Avenue in Clackamas County, thank you, in Clackamas County brought to my attention that they're having some people that are being uncivil arrive in their businesses, tearing the place up, intimidating the customers, intimidating their employees. And that's unfortunate. I do know that there's some work underway to help rectify that. But just to amplify that, But just to amplify that, in the news yesterday was the fact that the Burgerville on 82nd Avenue, oh, near 82nd, 92nd Avenue, in the Lentz area in Portland, closed for this very same reason, because it was unsafe to their employees, it was unsafe to their constituents. And we just can't let public safety, our constituents, the businesses, the employees, be put at risk. So we're hoping that Clackamas County, and I'm confident that the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office will step up their game to make sure our businesses and our employees and our constituents can walk into the businesses, patronize them, and so forth. So I just want to point that out, and I apologize from my throat. Could be the mask.
Could be, you never know. Are you finished, Paul?
I am.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your comments. It has been a hugely busy week. The National Night Out was held in Happy Valley this Wednesday. There must have been 700 to 800 people there. It was huge. And that just goes to show that people want to be out, engaging and socializing and doing what they can. And it was also in recognition of our public safety folks, the fire, the police, we're all there, different police departments, as a matter of fact, Clackamas County Fire Department. As I was arriving, they were in their truck responding to a call, and it must have been easily fixed because then they came back and we were able to have a photo op with them, and I appreciate them very much. Many have mentioned our wildfire debrief town hall last night. It was hugely attended. We had 90 participants on the Zoom call. It was over an hour and a half, and we finally had to end it after 7 o'clock. People are really concerned about what we're doing and moving forward. Whereas, we are attempting to get some operations in place. We have made some changes. And as I pointed out last night to one of the people, it seems like, and they, and their comment, and rightly so, they said, "It seems like we haven't made any progress since last year at this time, when wildfire season was looking at it." And from the public outside looking in, I can deeply understand why they think that. My response to them was this, "It may seem like that, but you may not know, we have already had in Clackamas County, not including the cities, eight wildfires and/or brush fires. Eight. They have been almost immediately extinguished." That did not happen last time around on federal forest, federal service land, Forest Service Land. They were, that fire was allowed to burn a month before they even attempted to put it out, and by then it was too late. In our conversations with the governor, I believe she has taken on a new concerted effort to put out the forest fires. I have seen it in my conversations with Senator Jeff Merkley. We appealed to him. It is not acceptable that federal forest lands are allowed to burn. Those must be put out. And I was very strong with him. I don't know what's happening out there at that other level, but I think they have heard us loud and clear. You know, something bad can happen next month, next week, tomorrow. I don't know. But I will say, the efforts to distinguish the fire, extinguish the fires so far are working. I had a Zoom call with the mayors from Tualatin, Lake Oswego, and West Lynn over a letter that they had sent us regarding notification of building areas in Stafford Triangle. That was very cordial. It was a lot of fun, and I appreciated my time with them. During the, the meeting last night, it may have seemed disrespectful for some, and I had to leave the meeting to take a phone call and had to come back, and then I had to apologize. The governor had called me in request of, I had reached out to her because yesterday she put out a press release, and I, and I thought some of the language was confusing, and I wanted clarification for my county. The headline is, "Governor Brown Announces New Health and Safety Rules for Employees in Healthcare Settings to Help Prevent Further Spread." And I thought, hmm, I need a point of clarification on this because Gary Schmidt, my administrator, and I talked about, it was a very long press release, and what she outlines what she wants to do. And I says, "Well, hi Kate, how you doing?" And I says, "I see your press release. Now, is that in regard to counties?" She says, "No. It's state agencies, state clinics, if there are any, whatever the state authority she has over." And I said, "You return the health authority to the counties." She says, "Yes, and it will stay there." She says, "But I would like to see a mask mandate." And I said, "Governor, no." What I said was, "Kate, thank you for that, but I have to be very honest with you, we will not institute a mask mandate in Clackamas County." And she says, "Oh, I know." And matter of fact, none of the counties are going to do it. So you're not alone." And she says, "I will say, Clackamas County has been doing very well. I am very happy with your progress, and Clackamas County on many of the metrics are far ahead the rest of the counties in the state of Oregon." We ended up talking about some other situations she's been working on. Secretary Tom Vilsack, the U.S. Department of Agriculture Chief, came out. She met with him, and she says, "God, I was so surprised. We've been talking about this and talking about this, and all of a sudden, he's here in Oregon, and we were able to tour the, the farms that have been affected." And there's pictures in that other press release that also came out that it was very good. I says, "Kudos. I am so happy that you're really taking the agricultural drought situation that our crops have suffered through, you know, three or at least two situations where it's almost wiped out all of our crops." And this board will be addressing that in the coming weeks. And I was very happy with that. So that's how our conversation ended. She did give us kudos. I will say that, that Washington County and Monloma County has gone with a recommendation in their public buildings. Clackamas County, Gary, what is our policy here?
We are recommending that employees and visitors wear masks, but it is not required.
It's not, it is optional, and we're going to continue with that countywide as well. That's all I have to say. And I want to thank you and everybody for your participation and attendance today. This meeting is adjourned.